Okay, Council, we have a roll call. Think we're...there we go. Ms. Holliday?
All councilors present, with Counselor Hensley previously requesting to be excused, an acquorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, excusing Ms. Hensley from the meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is the section of the program to where we allow citizens to come up to the podium, and we allow you to make comments. We do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you are still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end the comments and have a seat, okay? The first person I have is Ruthie Brown.
And Mayor, just, we apparently have no power, at least to our controller, for our usual timer, so I've got one up on the screen.
Oh, thank you, that's creative. Good.
Good evening. Ruthie Brown, you know where I live and where I sleep, right? Anyway, I'm passing around just a little sheet on what the flag project costs there in Centennial Veterans Park, and sure invite any of you that want to donate to donate, or if the city as a whole wants to donate, that would be sweet. I've got to raise another fifteen hundred bucks so we can do the other circle come spring, so I've invested a lot of time and energy and my own money in that, so it looks fabulous. Sad that we didn't do it ten years ago, but it's done now, and earlier, the breeze was just blowing a little bit, and the flags, it's pretty awesome, I'm pretty proud of it, so...anyway, I was going to come for something else tonight, but I want to speak out on this hotel motel, whatever it is, and I've talked to a lot of businesses who didn't get incentives to build, or buy, or remodel, or anything like that, and I don't know if what you're doing is good or bad, but a lot of businesses downtown are not feeling the love, and to give this kind of money away, and to adjust parking downtown, it kind of amazes me that no one even went and talked to the owner of Ruby Slipper to see what this would mean to her business. You know, Oscars had property for sale and stuff, but how many people park in that lot to go to her restaurant? And now they won't be able to park in that lot, and they won't be able to park in the other fifteen spots, and how many will be parking on the street? But the sad part is, to me, no one had the courtesy to go talk to her, and say, "Hey, we're excited about this, blah, blah, blah," because what Mr. Patel is getting is a lot of money, and it may work and it may not. You know, the train may file bankruptcy, and we may have no train, and maybe motel rates will be up there sky-high, and maybe there'll be a little restaurant there and a gift shop that will compete with all the rest of us who are already in business and have paid our own way, so...and other businesses I've talked to downtown, too, that no one, no one went and talked to them about three-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars, and it's probably going to be half a million, but it sure leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I work pretty darn hard. I'm going to say one more thing, you can put me in jail for being over, but I'm going to go back to the email that the city sent to Excel, and I've thought a lot about that, too, and you know what? I worked for ten weeks with individuals from Blue Peaks. We cleaned the city parking lots, we swept, we hauled trash, we cleaned it up. You know what? You don't have to thank me, but you never thanked Blue Peaks, and so it should, what's good for one should be good for all, so Darlene McCarell, her business looks great. Did she get an email from the city and say thank you? I don't, I guess it depends on whose butt you kiss.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we have Erin Mittenberger.
Thank you, Council. So congratulations, first of all, to those new councilors who are elected. I know that you'll be officially sworn in and congratulated later. I'm going to have to go pick up my kids, so I also wanted to do some public comment around the Patel property. I don't discount any of the perspective that Ruthie has, I think I bring a different perspective, which is that I really appreciate City Council empowering both Heather and specifically Kathy Woods Rogers to work with local businesses around the parking issue, and for incentives to continue to bring businesses downtown. It's a really big deal, as we're watching several businesses downtown go out. I think downtown revitalization is a really important thing for vitality, economic vitality, livability for a community like ours, and I know that this was not easy, and so I wanted to publicly celebrate both Heather and Kathy for their work in negotiating with the Patels for this hotel, and I think it ultimately will be a really good thing for the city. I also want to talk specifically about the parking, because I know that there was a lot of back and forth about the parking, and they worked really hard to work. I'm on the La Puente Enterprises Board, so I heard about some of the consternation around parking stuff, and I really appreciate the plan as it's being presented, because it really is equitable, so thank you, and is Kathy still here? But thanks to Kathy as well.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, up next, we have Amanda Pearson.
Hey.
Hey there.
Amanda Pearson, on Cascade Avenue in Alamosa, and I was coming to tell you about what's going on at La Puente. I think we should try to do that more often, sometimes we get busy. Holliday, we had the Pals, Liz Hensley said, "I didn't know about Pals Art Show that was last Friday," and I thought, "Well, we didn't really come to tell you about Pals Art Show, so I thought maybe I should come and tell you what's going on." It was fantastic, I just want you to know, if you didn't go, you missed a grand time. The Pals came, they showed, they had four pieces of art each, they all had ties or dresses on, they got to talk to their patrons, and they each made thirty dollars to spend any way they want to spend it, so that was very fun. We have, the Thanksgiving box giveaway is happening on Saturday, if you want to just drop over to the facility over by the county buildings, the food bank facility, they're going to be packing those boxes in the morning, so you can drop by and help be part of that assembly line. That was a Thanksgiving meal for four, for twenty-nine dollars, so a really nice thing happening on Saturday. If you know people who didn't get to be part of that, anything that we have left over is going to be at the food bank on Monday, they can go on Monday and pick up anything that didn't make it to a box, because we did have our fill. We have the Thanksgiving meal happening on Thursday, one to three, you're all welcome to come, it's a community meal, I'll be there with my family, I don't have to do dishes, it's lovely. They could use some more vegetable dishes, so if you have a fine vegetable casserole that you use for Thanksgiving, call us up and volunteer it, and we will use it for Thanksgiving meal, and then our Share the Magic event is the seventh, I have tickets for sale on that, and then I have, we have our Christmas party, which is the twenty-first, I think, is Saturday, and which is a great event. Also came to talk to you about Tucasa, and Brett, as you know, the board president of Tucasa, we are stabilized, we're definitely in difficult financial situation, but for now stabilized, have had a lot of partners come in and help us out. My staff there is taking less and less pressure off of me, which I appreciate, since I have a pretty full plate, and we'll try to keep you up to date with what's going on with that, and because I was going to come here and tell you, I'm the one that kind of pulled up the map of the parking and told La Puente people that I thought that this was a win, and really appreciated that this was a way to think it out, especially with the parking here, which I think is happening on the motorway building, which will help alleviate some of the issues with the businesses right there, and I just wanted to say thank you all, thank you Heather, for, it was, it's a tough, it's been a tough, tough work, a lot of hard work, and I appreciate it, you all, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Heather, I'll turn it back over to you all for any follow-up, if any follow-up is needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to work backwards, since Amanda's still here, and just offer as well, you are always welcome to come here and share your energy with us, but another way, too, is anytime you guys email us about these events, we can not only share it with Council, but we can use our social media as well to help promote it, so...yeah, so that offer always stands, too, as far as trying to make people aware of some of the events and those types of things as well. In regards to the downtown hotel, this is a project that actually started over seven years ago, to be honest. It's a project that, I don't know everyone at the table, because it was before I came here, but it was related to ACID and the community partners that sat on the ACID board, and they made the determination that that location with the buildings that were there, and the blight, and the disrepair, and the crime that was occurring, that something needed to be done, and that group of people came together in order to raise funds, in order to purchase the property, to demolish it, they successfully received a grant. Yes, the city was very much a partner, both with resources of staff time and that type of thing, but from financial resources as well, but there was, I believe, five or six community partners that gave twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars each for the vision of transforming that corner. They did not enter that project to keep it as parking, they would not have given the amount of money that they provided to that project to have parking. I know parking is a need in the downtown, I've never argued that, we need to be strategic with that, but that was never the vision when this project started seven years ago. There may not have been recent discussions with some of the surrounding property owners, but that's not to say that there weren't discussions before Manny bought the property. I know when Randy was the director for ACID, he had several discussions of some of the property owners, including those of Ruby Slipper, on if they had interest in purchasing that property, either to keep it as parking, or to build something on it themselves. I think some of them toyed around with some of the ideas, but in the end, they decided not to purchase it, and so it was a decision they made, knowing that they had that opportunity. So I think having that historical understanding is really important. The, sorry, the current plan, one of the concerns that was just brought up is if there's going to be competition related to the hotel, unless there's a significant curve ball, and I want to be clear, we don't control the developer, because obviously it would be a private development, but he's already had to downsize, and based on the room count he needs to make this project work financially, he does not have space to do retail, or a restaurant, or anything like that. It's going to be at least seventy rooms in that hotel in that location, per the contract, and so there's physically not room for there to be any kind of competition from a retail or a restaurant perspective, and it's a good point, because what that means is when we've run the numbers on what this project means from an economic impact, it comes out to sixteen million dollars annually, so every year, this hotel will have that kind of impact on this community. And when Council was looking at this project, though, it wasn't just what's the financial impact, which is significant, but it's also where's the location, who is the developer, what's going to get done, there's a lot of facets that Council was evaluating when doing this. So for example, if the developer would be putting this hotel in a different location in town, there's a good chance we wouldn't be having this discussion, but Council has heard loud and clear that we need to do something to help the downtown, and there's a lot of different ways we need to go about doing that, but this is one very significant way for us to help those downtown businesses by providing a sixteen-million-dollar impact annually at their doorstep, and that can't be, I just can't overstate that. It's still a sixteen-million-dollar impact on the west side of town, or the north side, or the south side, it's still that impact, but it's not in the downtown, and so I think that was a major consideration when Council was taking a look at that. And we do take seriously our locally-owned stores, and so I know there are some Council members, when we discuss this, that said this incentive is as much for our downtown locally-owned businesses as it is for the hotel. The other aspect that we took into consideration is the but-for test, so if it was not for this incentive, would the project still happen? And I can tell you unequivocally, if we would not have come to the table, we would not be getting this hotel with a sixteen-million-dollar impact annually on the downtown. So what we would have is the dirt parking lot, or we can have a seventy-room hotel that is generating bodies and shoppers for our businesses directly where they need it. So that's the but-for test. The other thing that Council took into consideration is this is a developer that has other development projects in our community, and a solid reputation of following through and operating a very solid business plan, and so I think that carried weight with Council. It's not someone that was new, and do we sign this deal, and they're gone, or some things like that, so I think that carried a lot of weight with Council. The developer was very informative with us, too, in regards to when they're putting hotels in other communities, what they're providing as far as incentives, and they're very similar, and not all of them are in the downtown, they're providing those incentives in order to just get the hotel, and so there is, it's not something where the city of Alamosa's stepping out, out of line with what other communities are doing. The other is the type of fiscal impact we're providing, we wouldn't be able, or incentive, we wouldn't be able to provide that incentive if the hotel wasn't going in, so let me explain that. We anticipate getting fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually from taxes, from the room rates and all of those types of things. What the agreement is, is over the first ten years that the hotel is open, we will pay the developer thirty thousand, so we're still getting more taxes than we would without this project, so we're not taking it away from anywhere, and we're using this money to make the project happen, so it's directly tied to that. So it's something that philosophically, some people, they may not feel government should be doing this, or they may look at this price tag and think that's really big, and this isn't an effort to try to talk them into that, because I think having differences of opinions is very healthy for this community, and I think it's something all of you guys considered when we were having these discussions, and what I've explained to some others is we have that economic impact formula, and we'd run anything through there, so we have previously run through, what does a retail shop in the downtown, what is that economic impact, so we can compare it. It's about three-hundred to four-hundred thousand, so there's a significant difference, and that's why I think Council took this so seriously, is because at sixteen million dollars, it's a really big deal to have in the downtown, but it's not something that you guys would limit to just this type of development. If someone else in an existing business was expanding, we would run their numbers through that formula and evaluate if there's something needed, we do the but-for test, if there's a new business coming to town, those types of things, so it's nothing that's been limited to this, but there's that scale and scope based on the economic impact that that business investment will have from a community perspective, and so I think it's a very healthy discussion. I know this is different than the contract we had previously, because he wasn't able to make the numbers work with the purchase price that was going to need to be for the land, so we did lose the square foot, the conference room, and we went from eighty-nine rooms down to seventy, but then we adjusted from a city perspective, we lengthened the time of when he will get a reimbursement, and there's less property that we're providing, and some things like that, so we scaled our size down to accommodate his scaling down of the project as well, and so it is, it's a big project, and it's a little bit new for City Council, but it's definitely worth this opportunity to clarify what goes into the consideration that Council had when they were doing it. And with that, Mayor, I don't have any other follow-up.
Okay. Thank you very much, Heather, for following up. Okay, Michael, Council Carson?
I just wanted to thank you, Heather, for clarifying that, because, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a council, I can't speak to what previous councils have done, but as a council, we want to incentivize businesses to come to our town, and not just downtown, but all over, so thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that.
Okay. All righty. Up next, this is a fun part of the agenda, ceremonial items, oath of office for Council Members Daniel and Counselor Grego. All right. (applause)
(inaudible).
Charlie, you should know this by heart.
I, Christina Daniel.
I, Christina Daniel.
Subject to the penalty of perjury.
Subject to the penalty of perjury.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
And uphold the Constitution and laws.
And uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Alamosa.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Alamosa.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of Counselor at large.
Of Counselor at large.
Upon which I am about to honor.
Upon which I am about to undertake.
Charlie, you should know this by heart.
I, Charles Greg.
Subject to the penalty of perjury.
Subject to the penalty of perjury.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Alamosa.
Of the city of Alamosa.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of Counselor Board Three.
Counselor Board Three.
Upon which I am about to undertake.
On which I am about to undertake.
Hey. (applause)
Nine times, yeah, nine times. Charlie, you should have a good laugh.
Yeah, that's what I told him. How does it feel?
It feels good to have four years.
There you go. Four, huh? Congratulations to our council members, and we wish you the very best. Good job. All righty. Up next, we have Consent Calendar A, Counselor V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Holliday?
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. Up next, we have under regular business, business brought forward by city staff, public works.
Thank you, Mayor. The item you have before you tonight is a little different. Way back in 2016, sorry, I get distracted here, back in 2016, City Council had been, well, actually, 2015, Council had been looking at ways of exploring LED lighting to be greener in our energy usage in the city, and we were looking at some of the streetlights that we owned from a municipality to maybe have a trial run at that, but then soon thereafter, Excel created their LED program, which then we were able to take a look at, and so at that time, it was something that was very popular with City Council. We did have some back and forth with Excel on the type of lights that were going to be used, based on some of the medical information and some things like that, but we were able to get the design that we needed. We split that project over three years, and we thought that this was the last year. It was in a meeting with Ashley that she shared that there's actually more lights that they weren't aware of in their system, and that's what the map is showing up there. So those that are yellow stars are those that were replaced the past three years to LEDs. The green are those lights that were mistakenly left off, and so there's about a hundred and ninety-two of those streetlights, and how it was explained to me is that it was essentially a clerical error, they're used to communities just having one account, and we have one major one, and then two smaller ones, and so they didn't, I guess, look at the two smaller ones. But that said, we do have a hundred and ninety-two lights that have not been converted to LED. We were able to work with Excel, it will be the same price as if they were included through the first round, it's going to be the same specifications, and all of those things, and so our recommendation is that we would move forward with this. The estimated cost is at seventy-three thousand, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. From a financial impact perspective, when we were working on the budget, we had a bit of a heads-up that this had happened, so you have approved the 2020 budget that has forty thousand in it. For this year, we actually have eleven thousand left over from the installation from this year, which leaves about twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty. As I shared on a different issue, our interest income has exceeded what we budgeted for this year, that would cover that twenty-two thousand. Excel says they can split it over two years, we don't think it's needed, in fact, if we give them notice, they could probably get all of these done before the end of the year. So if Council is in favor of that, we would just, you know, when we do our last budget amendment, have that calculated for you, and we can move forward with Excel on getting this done.
Okay, thank you, Heather, Counselor V. Hill, and then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. In your communication, Heather, you say, "Under fiscal impact," it says, "Through a previous internship, staff was able to determine that the city is seeing associated savings?"
Correct.
Can you comment on that, maybe you have a figure for that?
So right below that is the previous fiscal impact, we were anticipating, if we went with option B, which is what we ended up doing, was that we should see a savings of about thirteen thousand, we're right around that number.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, I'm told in favor of this, I want our city to keep going green, I know in 2015, some of us were up here, we were pretty gung-ho about that, I hope we continue doing that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carson, I thought I saw your light on, but you're not, okay, Counselor Daniel? Okay.
So I just want to make sure I understood what you said just now, you said if we let them know now, they'll get them done by the end of the year, you mean at the end of 2020, or the end of 2019?
Twenty nineteen.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we approve, I'm sorry, I approve, I move that the city authorize the continued participation in the Excel LED program.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Holliday?
The motion carried unanimously.
Great, okay, thank you. Up next, we have City Manager Legal, first reading of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As you guys remember, because we just did this in October, is as part of our budget for 2020, we had an extensive discussion on our outside funding, and as part of that, we had a discussion of awarding one thousand two hundred to the Alamosa Veterans Service, and so we increased that line item budget by a little bit in order to afford this, and you guys have approved the budget, and so normally, after that happens, we go do the contracts with those outside agencies as the direction of Council, but since the veterans' group is an actual governmental entity, I can't not do a regular contract with them, we technically have to do an IGA, so there's nothing different in here beyond what Council's already approved, it's just we need you to approve it in an IGA format.
Okay. Counselor Carson? Oh. And then Counselor Grego.
Oh, go ahead.
Counselor Grego.
I just want to thank the Council for...
I just want to thank the council for, we're helping our veterans. This money here will go towards a lot, we have a lot of disabled veterans here in the valley and they're taking to Denver, Pueblo, wherever they need to go. And these monies will help out a little bit. And like I said, to help our veterans that have helped us, it's so important. And so, I just want to thank the council and city manager for looking at this. And anything we can do for our veterans, I, you know, we should be able to do it. So, with that, thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor Grego. Great comments. Councillor Carson?
I was going to make a motion that we approve on first reading ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-eight dash twenty nineteen, approving the undergovernmental agreement with Alamosa Veterans Service for providing veterans assistance to local veterans.
Public hearing.
Or set it over for public hearing.
What day? Give the date and time.
December fourth. On December fourth, twenty nineteen, at seven PM or soon thereafter.
Second.
Matter may be heard.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you councillor Carson. Okay, let's start voting. Okay, up next, we have a motion authorizing the city manager to sign a development agreement with Manish Patel for the construction of the downtown hotel.
Thank you, mayor. So, I reviewed the fiscal considerations as a response to the citizen comment as well as a lot of the thought that went into why we did these negotiations. So, therefore, the only thing I'm really going to review with this is to make sure people understand the property and the exact dimensions of what's going on. The Patel property that's shaded in blue, that is the Pink Elephant property that was purchased by Manny Patel from the ACID. It wasn't the city that owned it. He purchased it from ACID. The, to the right of it is the city-owned property that, again, six and a half, seven years ago, we had talked about if the right project comes would be a contribution towards that project. It's my understanding that Mr. Patel is negotiating with Oscars, which is that thin little sliver that is on the far east side right there. But he did have to downsize the scale of it and will not be repurchasing the La Pointe properties that are then further east of there. So, that Oscars property is as far east as this project would go. He did want some overflow parking, which is those fifteen parking spaces on the city-owned lot. People will be able to use them during the day. It's about three or four o'clock, I believe, that we would sign it, that then it's for hotel permit use only. And then, beginning at nine or ten the next day, it would be free backup for public parking. There is language in the contract that Manny wanted to make sure that we were transparent about for what was important for him from a need for this project. And that is that the motorway does need to be demolished. Clearly, that's, we don't own it. That's a whole different kind of discussion. But should that change, he didn't want anybody to be surprised then that the project doesn't move forward. And so, that's why that language is in the contract. And I've covered the three hundred thousand split over ten years that will be more than covered by the fifty to sixty thousand that we anticipate from taxes.
Councillor V Hill?
Thank you, mayor. I guess I have a few questions on the motorway building. Is it going to be torn down?
That is my understanding. I need to call Kale, but I read in the paper yesterday that they did vote. Based, they had very favorable bids that they received and they did vote to enter into negotiations with the lowest bidder for demolition of the motorway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Grego?
I wanted to make some comments. I appreciate Ruthie Brown because she always keeps us on our toes and makes sure that we're doing our job. And, you know, and she's right on a lot of, a lot of things. But I, I'm the city councilman here that's been here the longest. And I look at even the staff, I see a couple that probably have been here probably about the same time I have it. But incentives are hard to do here in this community. And we have looked at incentives before on hotels and we never went through on it. But we have, the city has done incentives. You know, if you look at our downtown area, that parking lot east of what used to be my bar, Greco's Lounge, that used to be a big hotel there, the Victoria Hotel. Back then, the city looked at the downtown parking. They went in there, they purchased that and they tore it down and made it downtown parking. They went across the street where Montgomery Wards, and this is what probably you guys, a lot of people don't understand what a... Right there in front of Oscars, there used to be a big shopping center there, Montgomery Wards. The city went in there, tore it down, helped develop parking for downtown, you know? We went west of town and we looked at some other incentives. We did that crossing over there where we had a dealership, a guy that wanted to put together some dealers, bought all the dealerships and he wanted to put them together and make something really nice. Well, we worked with him. We worked with him. We've worked with other people that are in that area. You know, so it's, like I say, it's hard to, sometimes the incentives, it's hard to do. But in this case, I'm one that, that I, you know, if it's not going to have something, you're not going to get my vote. And I know that we need to anchor the downtown. It was mentioned that there's a couple of businesses that are leaving. You know, we got to have an anchor there. If not, we're not going to have a downtown. And to go back and try something else later, once something slips by, it's hard to get it back. So, I, like I said, I appreciate what Ruthie does and her common stuff. But something like this comes once in a lifetime and it looks like history's repeating itself. Because there was already a hotel there years ago. Now, we're putting a hotel back in there. So, I think what we're doing, I know there's a lot of people out there and I've talked to a lot of business people, even some restaurant people that said, hey, you know, we're not going to lose parking. We're going to, those people that parked there, that stay in that hotel, they got to go eat somewhere. So, they're going to leave their cars there and they're going to walk a block or two blocks or three blocks. So, that's, you know, that's economic development for those people too. So, I hope they see that and I, like I said, I support this for that reason or else I wouldn't have supported it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Grego. Councillor Brawls?
No, I just have one more, one more question. It says the agreement is continued upon Patel being able to secure demolition of the motorway building. You mean the property, don't you, not the demolished building?
So, he's not purchasing it. It's contingent on the marketing board demolishing the building and turning that into public parking.
Oh, so he's not going to buy the property?
No.
He wants to see it public parking?
Correct. So, that will be public parking. I know the motorway board, they're, they're big, well, one, they've had this building that's been sitting there and that kind of stuff. But the other is from an RV parking perspective, so they're going to design it from some RV parking. We've also talked about use for the farmer's market. So, there's going to, there's going to be a lot of potential public benefit to that.
Councillor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate, I think you said this has been going on for seven years. I know the last several months have been very difficult. And so, I really appreciate the things that the city team has been doing and the information you've been giving us. And really, Mr. Patel trying to figure out how to, I feel like in some ways, trying to make this work too from his perspective. And I appreciate, one of the concerns I had was ensuring that we weren't over incentivizing. And so, I really appreciate that when his scope changed, ours did too. And I think that's really important for people to hear and to recognize that it wasn't a, our solution wasn't a one-size-fits-all. And I think that's really, really key in this. And I know there may be some other comments, but if they're not, I would move that we allow the city manager to sign a development agreement with Manish Patel.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I just have one comment. Heather, I appreciate you making that statement that this project has the potential of providing a sixteen million dollar annual economic impact. And it's like we're putting that economic impact on the doorsteps of our downtown businesses. I can assure you from talking to those downtown businesses, they can use an economic impact. So, thank you. Okay, councillor V Hill?
I have a question. You're fine. Heather, can you comment on the potential of maybe in the future, if Manny has more negotiations with property owners in the area going east, that there could be one day also a conference room?
I think Manny's open to those ideas. I think he just was in this position that he either needed to decide to do the project scoped the way he could afford it right now. But he did mention that once it's up and running and depending on what the market is and how negotiations would go, it could be designed in a way that if there's an expansion, that we could again look at those types of opportunities.
Okay, and... What was I going to say? I just had it. I forgot what I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor V Hill. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, good. Up next, we have committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Councillor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I have two. Both of the meetings happened last night. The first was I attended the public library board. They just do some really amazing, amazing things. And so, if you've not read the report or looked at the services that they offer and all of the activities they have for children and families and adults in our community, please do. The other piece is there are over thirteen little free libraries around our community, which are those little boxes that people can put books in and take books out. And to me, that's just, for a town our size, a city our size, that just feels really amazing that all of these people are taking ownership. And so, that was a really neat thing. I also attended the homeless coalition meeting last night. We had some good discussion. We're still coming together and forming, doing the storming, forming, norming phases of coming together as a group. But there is a subset of the bigger group meeting to really talk about what our next steps could be in this, really starting to get cold time, how we're going to help people who need it immediately in addition to planning our bigger picture goals and ideas. And I think we'll be able to bring some bigger picture information here very soon.
Okay, thank you councillor Daniel. No further council comments? Alright, let's move on down to staff announcements.
So, I have actually some really great news and a favor to ask of council. Harry has shared that the construction of Foster Avenue is complete and that they did a really great job. So, if you see Jeff Martinez, I think, giving him a pat on the back. We were getting nervous with the weather getting colder on if it was going to be able to get squeezed in, but it did. And Harry was impressed with how the project came out. So, that's really nice news to have that be done. You also, by the end of the week or early next week, will start to see some movement going on at Montana Azul Park. So, some earthwork and some of that. So, that's been a long time coming as well. And we're excited to see some of that work happening. So, I get to do the fun stuff and then Eric can give the other update.
Lawyer, lawyers are downers.
Okay.
So, we, we had an issue with Century Link on the first phase of First Street. They did not give us valid information on where their lines were and we ended up having to spend about fifteen thousand dollars extra, fourteen thousand, four hundred extra to deal with that problem. They assured us at the time they would pay us. They have not done so despite repeated entreaties. And so, we just filed an action in county court to get that dealt with.
Okay, alright. Good deal. Thank you, Eric.
And I promise you, we had multiple conversations and we even did a letter from the city attorney trying to get them to pay this before we did this.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Okay, so now it brings us down to council comments.
Mayor, I remember my question. Heather, now that we approved the hotel and that and the motorway building hopefully soon will be done and gone, what's his timeline?
So, I'm pulling that up. So, we actually did put some timelines into the development agreement. So, he, and this was very educational for me because I've never worked on a hotel project before. But apparently, to get the name brand, there's a whole process that can be fairly lengthy to prove that you should get it and all of that kind of stuff. He can move forward with the construction, I'm trying to pull up the agreement right now. He can move forward with the final engineering. He had had designs but not engineering, so he can start that process, which is a bit of a process as well. I think he estimated being able to open June thirtieth of 2022. That, so in the contract, he is saying that the construction and getting the certificate of occupancy by June thirtieth of 2022. Now, if he doesn't meet that, then we start not providing the same level of incentives. Now, there is some language in there that if there's certain things that come up that could give him till, I believe, 2023, so a few, six months to a year. Maybe his incentives aren't impacted, but after 2023, everything reverts back to the city and those types of things. And then incentives start ticking down. So, every month he's passed that, it's one less month he's going to get type of situation.
Thank you. Councillor Brawls and councillor Daniel?
No, I just become aware of the services of, services of adopted families in our community. I want to give a special thank you to those families that take over, actually do adopt children and also bring in abused children. I think that they serve a great service to our community and I want to publicly thank them.
Okay, and I apologize earlier when both of the councillors were getting sworn in. I didn't give them an opportunity to say something to the audience. So, at this time, I would like to give councillor Grego and councillor Daniel an opportunity to say a few words if they would like to.
Okay.
Councillor.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
People probably think that I'm crazy for serving thirty-six years with the city. But one thing is I love my community. And I want to thank my ward that has given me the honor to work with, I was thinking maybe forty-plus city council people, that each one of them brings something to the table. They love their community and they spend time for the, for the city. I've worked with, I think, over five city managers. You know, and I've lost track of how many police chiefs and the staffs, the staff good... I can't just, even my tongue gets tiled up with the staff that the city has hired through the years and their dedication for their, what they do for the city, how they keep this community moving forward. It's just, it's just incredible, you know? And I look forward to working with the council for the next four years. And hopefully, this will be my last four years after I get our streets done. And, but I, like I said, it's just incredible, the people that put their time and effort for our community. It takes a lot, you know? And even the constituency that comes here to make sure that we do our job and stuff. So, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Grego. Councillor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
You know, this, this election, so this is my, my third election. And so, this one really felt like I, I'm getting in a groove. I feel kind of almost the opposite of councillor Grego where I'm just a baby in this and really trying to get my feet under me and really move forward. And I hope to have the kind of impact that councillor Grego has had and be able to share that I've worked with, you know, many councils and many staff. And so, I'm just really, I feel very fortunate and very humbled and very grateful that I have this opportunity to serve in a new, in a new way. And in a way where I feel like I have four years to really, you know, go all in and do this and really make, make an impact for our community and value and empower the teams that we have and the work that we're doing. Because we're doing some pretty amazing things as a city. And the only thing we do as council is just make sure that that gets to happen for people. That's our job. And so, it's my honor to be able to hopefully clear a path. And so, thank you.
Alright, okay. No further council comments? Okay, so up next, we do have executive session. Councillor Daniel?
Sure. Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B to receive legal advice from the city attorney concerning opting out of the opioid litigation negotiating class.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Let's take a five, just a quick five-minute break and then we'll go in the room over there. And for staff back there and anyone in the audience, help yourself to any leftover cake and... And for the staff back there and anyone in the audience, help yourself to any leftover cake and cider back there. Please feel free to take some home to the kids or to the family. Please do so. Okay? Thank you all. No further business will be discussed.